All right, welcome. This is the Hubbard County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, January twenty first. Called the meeting to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any additions or corrections I guess I should have called for first? All right, hearing none. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chair, doesn't Sarr need to be visible and do a roll call vote unless he's not voting?
Jeff, do you wanna, do you wanna handle what I asked?
Yeah. Sarr is participating but not voting.
Okay. Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you. All right, public input. Is there anyone here for public input? All right, seeing none, we move to item number three, the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to anything in the consent agenda? I just, I have one. It's in the minutes for the first meeting in January. When you get down to the legal newspaper, under "I," there is a, it appears there's a paragraph that was just left in there. It wasn't deleted and it applies to the, the voting for the chair in another section, and that section is correct. It's just inadvertently placed underneath "I," so. That's, that's all I saw, so unless we conducted business twice, which I don't think we did, so. All right, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
I'll second.
Right. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. So, employee recognition. Mike?
Morning, Cory.
Morning.
For employee recognition today in the Sheriff's Department, we have Brent Lindenfelzer, Assistant Jail Administrator, is recognized for ten years of service on January thirteenth. And Ava Edelman, Dispatcher-Jailer, began the part-time position January twenty first.
Welcome. All right, thank you, Mike. So we have, so, Southern Water Conservation District, Crow Wing River One Watershed One Plan.
The group for the One Water One Plan is ready to, it's been sent out the MOA because we've got kind of a draft work plan and everyone's, it's been approved, so what, January, I think it was January sixth, the beginning of the year, it was approved by the Northern Regional Committee, and it's gonna be going down to Bowser tomorrow to get approved at their board. So, they're looking, they're ready to get, to get funding applications sent in by the group, so we just need the MOA signed. It's pretty boilerplate language related to, or similar to other One Water One Plans. The only real notable thing is that there's a cloth mentioning Whiders as they intend to join on eventually. But they don't have it, it's not a hundred percent a setup, so you can see that they're mentioned in the, in the text, but not as a partner.
Okay, that was, that was gonna be my question. Okay, is there anything else?
No, like I said, just if, just here if you guys have any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Jake?
Do you have any concerns, Tom?
No, like Jake said, it's kind of pretty boil plate, very similar to other ones.
Okay, then I guess I will entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of, of understanding.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
This Ted, I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
As I said, one thing to note, the, the signature page is just off a template, so if you guys want your signature page to be different or have different people sign it, it doesn't have to be identical to what's, what's on there, so have whoever you guys feel you need to sign it, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we will skip over item number six for now until the time comes, and we'll move to highway.
Morning.
Good morning.
Few items this morning. The first one is to approve the final payment for Project SAP zero two nine five nine nine zero one zero. And this was, I gotta get to the right sheet here. This was on Fairwood Drive for Nevis Township. It was a box culvert replacement and landware construction was the prime contractor on that. And the final payment amount to the contractor is thirteen thousand thirty-six dollars and thirty-nine cents.
Were there any issues that arose through, throughout the construction timeframe?
Not from construction that I ever heard about. I know there's some ongoing water issues now that the township is dealing with, but they're gonna deal with it outside of the contract. Looking at some curb and gutter along the road to direct water away from some properties.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve that final payment.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any more discussion about it? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
All right, second item is approval to bid and let our construction and maintenance projects for this year. We're planning on four maintenance projects and nine construction projects for this season. Using a slew of different types of funds, I had them listed in the financial impact. A lot of federal dollars, I think there's five federal projects in, in our construction projects. Very thankful for Adam to jump in and learn, learn the process of those federal. They're quite a beast to handle and take care of. So our first one, we're planning on starting advertising tomorrow, and that's for our aggregate resurfacing project for county maintenance. So very busy summer, but it'll be good, and I think it's fun, so it'll be fun.
All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the advertising and, and bid letting?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
This Ted, I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
All right, the next item is another final payment. This one's for Project SP zero two nine zero nine zero zero four. And this was for the Akeley Trailhead, over an Akeley constructed addition parking lot and then connections into the trail, the Heartland Trail. And this final payment to Linco was the contractor is eighteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-nine cents. And on both of these projects, we were just the financial carrier for the projects. We had no input or I didn't sign anything or didn't sign anything on the plan form.
I know the city was still having some concerns about some water puddling or ponding.
Yeah, there was some.
Drainage wasn't quite what they expected.
Yeah, and I think that they got those fixed in the parking lot. There was some talk about some liquidated damages charging to the contractor, but then review of the contract, the contract wasn't very solid in terms of their start and stop dates, so they really had nothing to stand on in that aspect, so I think that the consultant that they used learned from that, and I think that they're gonna beef up their contracts and, and make sure that everything is to the specs that we, that we designed to.
All them talking about that, yes. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
This Ted, I'll second.
All right, any more discussion at all? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, very good.
And the last item I have is approval to purchase right-of-way. This is for our Project SP zero two nine zero seven zero zero one four, which is located on Casaf Four, the intersection of Casaf Four and Forty. We applied and we have eight sub dollars to use there to construct a center turn lane onto Casaf Forty. And this would be purchasing some easement right-of-way from the Dyer Family Partnership located on there. We're gonna do some slope improvements to cut back the banks, so some site distances are better for turning movements off of Forty onto Four.
This Dave, I'll move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, any more discussion?
And if the Dyer Family doesn't agree to sell, then eminent domain?
You can go into eminent domain. We've, we've talked to them and they sound pretty open to. We're not really constructing, we're just cutting down the banks of their slope because they're very high and then directly into the ditch, so they, they sounded like they'd be willing to, to sign and to go. Yeah, I've not had to go into eminent domain yet on, on any projects, but hopefully, I should knock on wood when I say that, but hopefully we don't have to, but it is a case that we can go in that direction if we need to.
If it was that, I'd like to know how much land then.
You know, I, you know the comps on that one?
It was about four tenths of an acre, so, yep.
And is that on what would be the north side of the road?
It'd be the southeast quadrant, yep, so as you're looking, the southeast kind of back behind you off of Casaf Forty.
Yeah, there's a high spot there too, yeah.
Yeah, the north, we'll be, we'll look at it when it's in construction. We'll see if there's more that we need to, to do to improve those site distances. We can look at it at that time of improving and talk to the landowner. There's a lot of utilities on that northeast corner, so we kind of wanted to stay out of there and not have to move utilities.
And you have traffic coming from the south, then you can kind of see better because of the curve in the road.
Yeah, yeah, and that's a big turning movement is that south one, and it's, there's, it's hard to see. It's a very difficult intersection, so hopefully this will help drastically with that.
And when will construction start?
I'm not quite sure yet. I don't, I don't have any, it should be this year, but I'm thinking probably this fall to construct it just with other major projects going on. We'll have to get in there and do it really quick, and then it'll be part of the detour also used for the Seven and Forty Roundabout that's planned, so we don't really wanna have two conflicts going on at the same time.
Good point. That's why you're the county engineer, not me.
Lot to think about, but it'll be, it'll be busy, but lots of, lot of good improvements this summer going.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Natural Resources.
Good morning. First on our, our agenda is the, sorry, my voice is a little loud in these things. The, the timber sale we had, the auction on January sixth, I was just gonna share the results with you all, and we saw very good results, twelve out of twelve parcels sold for a total of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars and ninety-seven cents. And that was a hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars over the appraised value. So we saw the timber sell for approximately seven hundred and eleven dollars per acre. And I believe there's six hundred and three acres on the sale, so. Still seeing really good, really good timber values and off the, the products off the TFL lands and it's a little frustrating when you see in the paper or people tell you that you know, TFL doesn't make revenue of properties. I, I'd beg to differ, I think, between recreation and timber and other things, I think, I think it does pretty good, so.
Cory, when's the next timber auction?
Um, it is April, April first, I believe it's the first week of April. Yep, yep.
That's close enough, thank you.
So.
Three more auctions for the year?
Yep, yep, so this is the first of four auctions, so there's gonna be three more auctions this.
They're gonna be comparable to this one?
Yep, yep, so.
That's a good amount of income then.
Yeah, yeah, so we're seeing very good prices out of our timber products and just to remind people that timber grows back, we can cut it again and just, it's a good deal, so. Like we spoke the last couple of board meetings, that pine is a good, pine is a good asset, so. We'll do our best to keep regenerating this pine and
Way to go.
Go from there.
Is there, are there any more questions for Cory about the sale? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye? Opposed? All right.
Thanks. Yeah, so the second item is another sponsorship request from a local ATV club, the Forest Riders ATV Club. They're pretty pretty popular in this area. They, they maintain a lot of the trails around the Park Rapids region and then up to Lake George and pretty much over to, into Becker County, so they're looking for a local government sponsorship, and I, I said we, we sponsor we sponsor many other clubs and just act as their fiscal agent. There's no real cost to the county, so. Just looking to get approval to be their, their fiscal agent and sponsor, so.
This isn't new, is it? It's been every year?
So we sponsor the Forest Riders Snowmobile Club, but they, they're looking for a sponsorship for their ATV club so they can get grant needed trail funding, so.
Did they not do it before?
They did. I believe that is through the Arago Township. They're looking just to, I don't think Arago Township is, is quite is wanting to do it much anymore because it is, it is a little bit of a commitment when they only have one meeting a month. So they're looking for more of a county's, county government sponsor.
I'll move to approve.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
All right, thank you. And a little update on, there's a snowmobile race coming up on, this weekend on Fish Hook. We had access that. Someone broke through right on the Fish Hook access, so hopefully with this cold weather, it freezes up good, and I think the, the race will be good to go, but it was a little, little alarming there for a little bit, so.
They looked at it yesterday. I think it's pretty good now.
Okay, yeah, it was thirty below, I think it'll.
Take care of it, yeah.
Yep, yep, so, all right, well, thank you guys.
All right, thank you.
So here we could do, item nine is really matter of fact.
Okay.
Just gotta, we plan to be here, but this is the, this is the third final installment of the radio replacements.
This is all budgeted, budgeted monies?
And this is the third final of the replacement of the AM radios for this, this go-around.
Okay, all right. Is there any more discussion about it? Questions that Jeff could answer?
It's also the smaller thing.
And then this is Ted, and like Jeff had said, we basically okayed this a couple of years ago and and it being a smaller installment and it's something to finish up, so I make a motion to approve.
Great.
I'll second.
All right, thank you.
I know, it's got all the encryption in it now too, so it'll be good going forward.
Okay, very good. All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
We do have, item number ten, I answer after we have our public hearing. I don't see that, I think I told you, Justin, we're gonna be at nine thirty or so. But we do have Bruce Kimmel on the phone, and he could talk about item ten C, which is, I think, pretty which is the letting of the, of the balance of the bond. Bruce, can you hear us? Are you available now?
His microphone is turned off.
Yeah, and he can hear me if he will.
I'm not hearing you very good, Jeff too, so I'm wondering if your mic's not working.
Bruce is off, uh, mute now.
I am here. Hi, everyone.
Good morning, Bruce.
Good morning.
You're kind of quiet though.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, that's bad.
Yep.
Great, well, Jeff, do you want to say anything in advance of me launching in with my, my quick overview?
I, I will say briefly that we got the update from Justin from ICS last week, and we know that our bids came in favorably, and we had authorized up to three million dollars for the, for the balance of the funding for this project. And the good news is we are proposing less than that for the actual issuance. And I will let Bruce take it from there.
All right, great, thank you. Well, good morning, Commissioners. I'm Bruce Kimmel of Ellers. Good to be here with you virtually. You've been through this routine before. This is what we call the pre-sale discussion. Basically, it's just an opportunity for us to, to show you what we've worked out with Jeff as far as the financing plan goes for these improvements. Let you ask, ask any questions that you might have about the proposed bond issue, and then ask you to consider a resolution essentially authorizing us to move forward with next steps towards the bond issue in early March. This meeting or this approval doesn't obligate you to move forward, but it's essentially giving us the green light to keep working with your team in doing all of the steps for the bond issue itself. So I believe you have the pre-sale resolution, or excuse me, the pre-sale resolution, and then beyond that maybe is the pre-sale report, yes, with the estimated bond amount, and I won't go through that full report. But as you can see here, due to the favorable bids that you did receive, the county is really thinking that it only needs to bond for about two point one million dollars of project costs. You can see that down in the sources, or excuse me, the uses of funds. And then when you combine that with the other issuance costs and underwriters discount, you can see how we get to the estimated bond amount of roughly two point two million dollars, two million two hundred and fifteen thousand in total. This bond issue will have a fifteen-year term. If you go onto the next page, you can see the estimated debt schedule. These are assuming somewhat inflated interest rates. As you know, we will take competitive bids on the county's behalf for this bond issue, and the, the best in, interest rate proposal will win. But you can see that with these somewhat conservative interest rate assumptions over a fifteen-year term, we are looking at about two hundred thousand dollars per year of debt service, and so certainly if we are able to attract better interest rates on the date of sale, again, in early March, that debt service might be a little bit less than the roughly two hundred thousand that we showed here. But that's pretty much it. We will be looking for an affirmation of the county's rating with S and P. You have a very good rating currently of double A minus. We don't see any reason why that would change negatively. It might, it might go up, so we'll certainly look for opportunities there. But the market is still very strong, even though rates are higher than they were at, you know, for a long time. We are, we are still seeing a lot of demand for municipal bonds from investors. There's not enough bonds being sold to meet demand, and so that is helping keep rates a little bit lower than they would be otherwise. And we expect very good, very good turnout for your bond sale here in March. Let me ask if there's any questions about the proposed issuance or the bond amount, bond structure, or anything else about this proposed issuance?
And I would comment that the two things that this lower amount allowed us to do is start, start the repayment in twenty twenty-six and go with the fifteen-year instead of a twenty-year term for this. So my goal was to keep the debt service right around a million, a little over a million dollars, and not have it go much over that. And we think well enough, we're on our first ten million dollar issuance, that these two combined will keep us in that ballpark. So we're being aggressive in paying this debt off because we've got good terms related to our issuance costs, related to the interest rates that we've gotten, and related to the project costs that we're expecting, so all of these things are good. We'll retire this debt four years earlier than we'll retire the ten million dollar debt.
I just have one question, Bruce. Is there any downfall to early repayment in full of the debt?
Uh, there is a ten-year call feature on this, and so the bonds will be callable in part or full on or anytime after February one of twenty thirty-five. We did, we do want to attract the best overall interest rates that we can, and like Jeff said, we, we were working towards you know, controlling the overall letter requirement for both this bond issue and the previous one. And so in order to get that best overall interest rate, we do need to offer the market some amount of lockout, i.e. you won't pay earlier than a certain date. And so we think that based on current market conditions, it would be best to have that first prepayment date be two-one of thirty-five, but at that point, you can see there's still a lot of bonds outstanding at that point. You'd be able to pay off, you know, roughly the, the last million or so, not quite million, of the bonds at that point, or just let it ride through the final maturity in two-one of twenty forty, or you could even do a partial repayment multiple times. You have complete flexibility at that point and beyond as to the repayment of the remaining bonds.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right. So is there a motion?
I'll, I'll move to approve the calling of the sale of the bonds not to exceed three million for the purposes identified.
Okay, all right, is there a second?
This Ted, I'll second.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce.
Alright. We will go excuse me, back up to item number six. Jeff, just a matter of procedure, do we need to close our regular meeting? Or recess? Okay. Alright, so I will entertain a motion to close the regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Right, I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright.
Mr. Chair, this is the continuation of the process to consider, um, establishing, uh, the ambulance service district to serve the Walker area, uh, ambulance service PSA. We've had a long conversation with the subcommittee from, uh, members from Castan, Hubbard County. Had a public meeting in November at the Walker area community service center. And we, uh, we had a little bit of a conversation a month ago, we called it, except for the public hearing related to this. We have some items that have been available that, um, that we didn't have available at the November meeting, which include, uh, this year's budget and this year's, um, actuals to date for the Walker, or for North Memorial, who is the provider, current provider for that ambulance service district. And, uh, we are here today to take any public comment that we may have. I will inform the board members, the only public comment I received was, uh, an email, um, from a member, from a resident who had been an independent at the November meeting that was in favor of that, of moving forward with this proposal.
Okay, so at this point in time, anybody from the public want to comment on the, uh, proposed, uh, ambulance service district? Yes, you would, you'll need to have to sign in at the podium.
I'll give you a sheet for you, because we'll want you to be there.
This is.
Yep. Alright, so, uh, please state your name
Yes.
for the record, and then move forward.
My name is, uh, Michael Bates. I'm a supervisor White Oak Township. And I'm, uh, so I'm appearing essentially as a private citizen, but also with representation to, uh, one of the townships which would be a party to, uh, this taxing district. Um, I have submitted, uh, uh, some talking points to Administrator Caldwell, uh, previous to this, so I will try not to, uh, uh, talk at great length about this. But, um, I am in support of the taxing district. Uh, and so that is a primary point I want to make. I also want to make the additional point that I believe that Hubbard County's Board of Commissioners has, um, the ability to, uh, reach out to, uh, neighboring counties and to our legislature in support of, um, other types of legislation that will, uh, serve the interests of our ambulance districts. Just to use as example, um, the Medicare requirement of, and Medicaid requirements of treatment in, in place are very, very limited under current regulations, both at the state and the federal level. So I believe that, um, the county boards for all the rural counties in Minnesota have a role in trying to, uh, change some of the, uh, uh, those regulations that are limiting our ability to, uh, serve our populations. I believe that, uh, the taxing district, uh, where we are basically supporting, um, our ambulance services with, um, property taxes is going to severely limit our ability to serve our populations. Amongst other issues that, um, this board can take a leadership role in, uh, bringing to, uh, our legislature, are, uh, the ability to establish essential service personnel designation in the state. At present, uh, the only, uh, state in the area is Iowa that has essential, uh, service personnel designation. We have the opportunity for our legislature to, um, provide, uh, funding for services such as training, such as, uh, uh, providing grant money to better support, uh, some of our services, including our, um, our supplies and equipment, uh, and capital improvement, uh, designation for ambulance services. I think that, uh, there are so many other points I could bring in, but my, I think I essentially have addressed the, the concern that I believe this board will have an opportunity to, uh, serve, uh, greater issues than to just these, these eastern Hubbard County, western Cass County, uh, ambulance district by, um, reaching out to our, uh, neighboring township, uh, neighboring counties and to our legislature, both in St. Paul, and using whatever we can to, uh, try to raise our mission in Washington DC as well. Thank you for, um, letting me speak to this body, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates.
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add something to his comments.
Sure, go ahead.
For the past three or four years, it's been a, it's been a priority at AMC's Public, uh, Public Safety Policy Committee to address these issues. Their statement specifically on it is, "The Association of Minnesota Counties supports strategic investments in a comprehensive emergency response system that ensures equities, uh, equitable access to twenty-four seven ambulance services, strengthens local emergency preparedness, and modernizes infrastructure and technology to effectively address the growing complexity of emergencies." So, so AMC and county commissioners around the state are, definitely have this issue top of mind with state legislature.
Thank you, D. Hunt, Commissioner D. Hunt, for, uh, your, uh, measure of support for, uh, some of the ideas I'm presenting. Thank you to this entire board.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else that would like to comment? Alright, you can come forward.
My name is Roger Geimer, I'm on D. Tover County Fire District. The response time is the critical issue. In Akeley, we have to wait minimum of a half hour to get an ambulance. And I was on a call, um, uh, three, four weeks ago, let's put it that way. Uh, it was an hour wait. And then we also had a call, all the ambulances, you know, for Park Rapids and Walker were out. We had to wait on an ambulance from Longville. So that was even a long wait. So, we have to figure something out for this half hour wait too long for a heart attack, stroke, if it could be. Somebody come with a chainsaw to get him in. We have to do something, step ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, I know the, once the, the board is established for the ambulance service district, those are things that are going to be talked about, um, as far as if there was going to be any additional staff, any exit, uh, additional, um, vehicles that would be added to the fleet for emergency services. Those are things that are on the list of, of, to look into, um, to see if they're justified, but it, it all does come in at additional cost. So, we just certainly need to be aware of that. But federal, and federal reimbursements are, for Medicaid, Medicare is really, really what's hurting hard.
Significant part of the problem that we need to address.
Yes.
Right now, Walker has one ambulance.
Correct.
Park Rapids has one and a half. So, Park Rapids is on a call to Osage, that leaves nothing
Correct.
for our side.
And I have kinda heard some of the same comments for the Hackensack area, too. There's concern about response time. Yes, definitely.
Do you say you rely on Walker to go all the way to Hackensack?
Yes.
Or Longville?
Well, Longville has their own ambulance service district.
Yeah, but they, they do.
They do, it's mutual aid. Yes, of course, mutual aid, yes. Alright, is there any other comment? Alright, hearing none, I will close public comment. Uh, we will I would entertain a motion to approve the establishment of the Oh, sorry.
Well, Mrs. Ted will make a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular board meeting.
Alright, thank you. Alright, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. Thank you for you for that point of clarification, Denise. Alright, so now, I will entertain a motion, uh, for the special taxing district for the Walker ambulance primary service area?
Well, I have to say that, um, what brought me to support this was the, uh, the response time. And in effect, that if this district would have been absorbed by other, uh, ambulance districts, it definitely have affected response times like the gentleman was saying. So, I'll make a, a motion to approve the forming of this taxing district.
And I'll second it, uh, because we there aren't a lot of good options, and this, this is what we have to do to guarantee ambulance service to people in that district.
Alright, any more discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right, motion carried. Okay.
I'm gonna clarify, I said, not a lot of good option, I mean, not a lot of alternative options. This is basically all we have left. It could turn out to be a, a really good option.
Sorry.
Alright. Um, I saw Cory was here, but then he stepped out.
He, he was here and we, I think he was told that we already approved his idea, so he went back.
Okay, alright, very good.
And we have Austin Major from ICS to, uh, to address that attendee.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, very good. We'll take care of that.
Yeah, so good morning, board. Um, so as you guys recall, last week, we presented, um, the bid results, the bid tabulation for the LEC Government Center project. Again, bids opened up very favorably, um, throughout the process, throughout last week. We went through all the parent low bidders, we qualified them through our qualification process, and, uh, and they all do qualify. Um, so as you can see on the board, we are here today to get formal approval, uh, with the said contract amount to proceed with, uh, ex- executing contracts with the parent low bidders.
Alright, is there a, a motion to that effect?
This Ted will make the motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Any more discussion, any, any more questions? I think we covered it pretty well last meeting.
Yeah, the process went really smooth.
It was smooth, and I was glad to see some favorable numbers, um, comparatively to what it could have been.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, motion carried.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Alright. Is there anything that I missed in the agenda?
Mr. Chair, we covered everything.
Looks so.
Um, there's one other additional meeting to note. Uh, that would be the Hubbard County Township Association meeting next Monday at seven o'clock in the lower level of the enforcement center.
Yes, that is correct.
We just got an email from, from the Ora with, uh, with the schedule.
Okay, alright. Alright, so, we will do committee reports.
Mrs. Ted, I can start.
Okay.
Uh, I had none.
Alright.
That's like twice now.
It happens. Alright, now, Tom, do you have anything?
Um, I, I had a couple. One was the, um, mental health board, the, uh, or local advisory council. Mental health, uh, day on the hill for, with legislators will be February twentieth. I believe they're gonna have a, a van with a number of people on, um, that attend these meetings and go to drop and center are gonna go down there. Um, and with transportation, they picked up, uh, a used bus from Crookston, which would be a standby use, and then they also, uh, either received or will be receiving very soon, a new bus, and then a recent hire, and, uh, brings them up to full staff, so. Um, and everyone sounded like they were pretty satisfied with, uh, the services. And so that's good. Um, with the Kitskami, uh, library, uh, I got elected to be, uh, chair for another year, and, uh, that results in, in, uh, more meetings, 'cause the chair sits on every committee, and then also this year, we have, um, labor negotiations. And, uh, sure gonna miss Tom Conway being involved in that, but we'll, we'll get by with it. We hope. That's all I got.
Alright. Um, and healthy Hubbard County twenty thirty. The, basically, the reports that COVID is back on the rise again. Hospital, hospitalizations are very common. Um, and the measles outbreak is considered over, so we don't have to worry about that anymore, hopefully. The community health survey, I was kinda surprised by, by some of the results. Basically, that approximately twenty percent of people reported regular marijuana use. The daily use is trending to be more than the daily use of alcohol. So people can decide whether that's a good thing or a bad thing on their own. And vaping and E-cigs are, uh, some of the top things that are incredibly addictive and negative for the health risks that are involved with the use of those items. That's really about it. I think, uh, Marley would like to come before the board at some point in time and make a formal report. They're working on, uh, drafting something of, as far as the plan for the implementation of using the COVID, or not the COVID, the opioid, um, settlement funds to address any of the issues that were apparent in, when they did the survey about the, about the information, so.
Mr. Chair, maybe I forgot one thing on the mental health board. Uh, Kelsey Firehammer, uh, would like to come before the board sometime at a work session or whatever.
Okay.
Just to talk about things that are going on.
Okay.
More than what I'm able to do.
Alright, very good. David?
Uh, just, uh, report that at an airport commission meeting and, uh, continue to struggle on determining, uh, how to build more hangars. There's a long waiting list of twenty-nine folks that would like hangars, but when you run the math and you do the business model based on the market and the rates that are, lease rates that are being charged, it's, uh, it's a really hard thing to do without grant money. With the low interest loan, so you basically, the good news is we're second in line for a hanger, low interest hanger loan. So, hopefully within the next two or three years, we can do something. Because there is some demand.
So, is it one airplane per hanger, or does a hanger hold more than one airplane?
It depends on the sizes you're building, you know, they'd like to add ten or twelve new hangars, so, you know, ten or twelve spaces, you could build a double one or single ones, but they're big, they're big empty spaces.
Yeah.
Uh, they don't garner much more lease sometimes than a small rental place at a They don't garner much more lease sometimes than a small rental place at a, I don't think so. It's, it's really hard to make a business model decision based on that, but basically everybody's been encouraged to keep those, because they want to encourage aviation use around the state and around the country, so. There'll be a work session again to discuss, it's pretty much a discussion at every airport commission meeting, probably not just Park Rapids, but every other community that's got a small airport, I'm sure it's the same discussion, too, so.
Okay, anything else? All right. We will, I will entertain, oh, we have the meetings to note, the department head meeting on January 28th. Do we, do we need another commissioner there? Jeff, I can't remember.
No, I just did December.
Department head?
I was there in December.
You and Shar were there in December.
I was there in December, so it's not my turn. And was, Shar was November, wasn't she? Oh, no, Shar was the chair.
Yeah.
So maybe it's my turn.
I don't know.
You were in November, weren't you, Dave?
For the department head?
Yeah.
My next?
No, I believe, I believe Ted would be.
Okay. So you can add that to your calendar.
I'll do it right now.
All right, the.
We do have the HRA meeting at 11:00 scheduled to start.
Yes. So we've got plenty of time. The AMC Legislative Conference for 26th to 28th of February, I don't know if anybody's planning on going.
I'm planning on attending.
I'm struggling to decide, because I don't know if it's going to be worth the effort if they don't have half the legislators there.
I guess if I go, I probably wouldn't be getting a room, I'd probably just drive down. I did that a couple, three years ago.
Yeah.
Where I just drove down each day. But I probably, I'm assuming we have to pay registration fees or whatever by a certain date.
If you just drive down there, you can register and bill us for the registration, so.
It can be a last minute deal.
The AMC portion of the registration, you do not need to commit to ahead of time.
All right, thank you.
They do generally want to know early on this one, though, because they have to schedule you with, with a legislative person.
Yeah, yeah. And, but the same thing like you're saying, if the House doesn't, if with the things going on in the House, what's going to be happening at this point?
Yeah.
I'd say in March, you'd think they'd be rolling by then.
Well, this is February, February 26th, 27th, the legislative conference.
Oh, excuse me, I was, I guess I always forget about the, the one in Nissaw.
It's not.
That's the leadership.
Yep.
That one I won't be going to, St. Paul.
How do they schedule your appointment with the legislators? Do you go just with your legislators, or?
Yes, they currently, they currently schedule counties block together regionally to meet with their elected officials. You usually have one in the House and one in the Senate. Yeah, that's, that's typically how the actual meetings are scheduled. Commissioner Geller has suggested that that's not necessarily.
Not for me anyhow.
The most, the most advantageous, but that's what the day's schedule looks like when we're down there in February, is that counties are grouped together and scheduled to meet with their elected officials, both chambers.
I'd prefer to get, I'd prefer, because I talk to ours all the time, I'd prefer that they line me up with somebody from the metro or something that has an opposing viewpoint, so they can actually try to have a conversation and try to understand where we're coming from out here in rural areas. And I've suggested that, and if I go, I will suggest that again, but if I, if I were to go and just get put in front of our legislature, I don't know that it's worth the county's expense to go. Except for the regular other business that, there is a little bit of that done, too.
It is valuable to at least have somebody there to suggest that, to support the bonding issues requested for solid waste projects or these projects. Somebody needs to be there to say, these are the typical things that were, that were important to Hubbard County, and we don't need five or six of us there to say those things, but somebody has to be there.
Yeah. If nobody else is interested in going, I will, I will, I will try to do it.
Okay, all right. And then we have the AMC Leadership Summit, March 26th to the 28th in Grandview Lodge.
And the, if Commissioner Rand Himmel's question was about the leadership summit, that one we do have to book early.
Okay.
Because that one will book up, and I know that the conversation has been, that having a good, good portion of the group there is helpful, because of the type of topics that we, we covered. I don't know that I've seen the, I have to look and see if I've seen the materials for this one, or what the format is going to be, but it, it is, it is a better one if the group kind of attends together.
I like going to that one, but kind of like to decide once I see the schedule, too.
Yeah, and I wonder, I guess it would be available on the AMC website if it's out.
Yeah, and we'll get some more information on that and have some conversations later.
That's one I'd drive to.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah, I think Tom Shar and I went last time, but it was good, did you go?
I did, I did go.
It, it was, it was worth it.
Okay.
I thought so.
All right, is there anything else? All right, so a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion.
Okay.